Okay, thank you. Next up is our RFP results for the property category workers compensation. And that is Cindy Sador.
Good evening. Hi, hello. So we were at work where we needed to go and get proposals for that casualty property insurance and also workers comp. So what we did is we put in a paper, we put it in the Chicago Tribune, not the local paper, because we wanted to have a broader stamp of allowing people to actually put in proposals for this. We did this and we gave three weeks for people to reply. Some of them, we had 12 people who actually pulled the proposal and we had received three. Three had put in proposals for the workers comp, one put it in for school board, and one put it in for student accident. So what we did is prior to us actually doing this, what I did is I had reached out to a bundle and I asked him back two members to talk to them. And one came from IPRF and we spoke to them back in October, so they knew exactly what we were looking for. And they started saying that we would start to look and see what this would be. When it came up time to actually put this in, that's when they came back and said, oh, click is a hard, is a hard broker to actually beat when it comes to casualty property. So we did not get one bid from one of them or proposals for one of them. I also had called my peers to ask them exactly, you know, how long would you give for this? And they said three weeks, you know, it was short, but they should have been able at least to put something together for you. 90 days seemed very long to them, because we did have one say that they needed 90 days for this. When we looked at what the rates were and what the dollar amounts were, the ones that were actually the IPRF, they're very healthy in their funds, absolutely. They do have healthy funds, but the one thing that we did look at is the fact that there are multiple municipalities they work with, which means that they're with police, they're with firemen, they're with EMTs, which is a higher listed workers comp than you would have in the school district. The other one was, it did not have a financial, is not really financially secure, so we did not want to recommend them. What we did is we went back and we tried to do a comparison of financials of what the offering was. And our recommendation for this is to stay with CLIC at this point.
I think that the question that was brought up in the public comments, staying with CLIC, will their rate be the same as it was in prior years?
Those rates will change if we're looking at workers comp, but they usually come out in approximately April or May with what our rates actually are. And for this, because our last year that we had is actually our highest year for workers comp that will drop off. So our workers comp should actually drop down from this.
I guess what I'm asking is, is there a reason that when this was sent out to bid, then CLIC didn't put a bid in?
CLIC said that there is, because they don't put those out, because they're, you're looking for apples to apples to be compared. The thing that they did tell about was the price on it. So they said that those would not be out until March, or I'm sorry, April or May. And that's normally going to the meeting in May is when we get our actual dollar amounts. So they did not, no.
But the reason we did the RFP was to have options besides CLIC?
Correct.
But we don't know what CLIC's option is?
No. So theirs would be, they would cover us entirely for insurance, because we're the ones opting to leave. So we would still stay with them if we opt not to leave. If we leave, then we just have to give them the resolution to let them know we're leaving.
Right. I just don't understand how we, the reason that we were sending this out is because of CLIC and their change in their, the way that they were, their recommendations, I think, particularly on the viability, yeah, legal, thank you. So given that, I don't know how we, I don't know how I can under, I don't understand how we can say we recommend CLIC when we don't know what CLIC is, when they did not come to bid. And the reason we did this was because of CLIC's prior, our prior experience with when they changed their rules.
Well, one is the fact that you're always with them unless you decide to leave. So that's part of that, so that is why we...
And I think the question is simple enough, but we don't know what it's going to cost compared to what they have cost. So how do we vote in favor of the cost? We have no idea what it's going to be versus at least some that we know, right? Is that sort of what I was...
Yeah, I, and also the reason we did the RFP is because of CLIC. But now we're saying we're going to stay with CLIC because it's better than the others, but they didn't respond.
Right. They only went, they only put in for workers comp. That was the only thing that they actually put proposals in for. They did not put anything in for property and casualty. And all four of them did make the comment that it would be very hard to look at CLIC's prices that we received and the coverage we received.
And when you say all, you mean the three that responded?
Yes.
So there is a big difference between three weeks and 90 days? Is it because we only did three weeks?
Well, we put it together and we actually had the one person that announced to the IPRF and they are one who also did put in a proposal. That did not seem like a short period of time. We also had the second one who wanted the IPRF come out and spoke to him. And he said, it seems short, but he would be able to do something. They would be able to at least get something together. But then it changed and then they said, well, we're not able to do it. So they needed the 90 days, because they actually need to come on site, look at the district, look at the squad.
So could we do the 90 days? Was there a reason why we were not doing that?
I actually asked one of my peers how long they would go out for this and no one said, they said 90 days is an awful long time to actually wait for our proposals to come in. They said that three weeks, you know, might be a little short, but it shouldn't be impossible. They should at least be able to give you a proposal if they want to actually give you a proposal for the property and casualty.
But the question is, why did we pick three weeks when we were talking about this back in October?
That's because when we actually sat down and we talked to them, we, I, sorry, people, the reason we picked the three weeks is because I believe it was in November that we put together the resolution that we had to have for them. And then I think what happened with that is that right after that, we started to put together the RFP for that. So that's why we needed to, we were trying to compare, so we were going back and forth with CLIC, trying to get a proposal ready so we could send that out, the coverage they have, and then have everybody else actually come in with their proposals. Because we were looking to make sure we were going to receive the same coverage, that's why we were doing that.
I have another question that I want to come back to this discussion. Can you elaborate a little bit on this discussion about equity return loss, what you're conveying in that, please?
So basically what happens is, there's money in there and the pool is doing well. And you don't have a lot of claims coming in or you pay a lot of claims at SUST. So what they do is they actually, they will turn around and they will give you, it has to be voted on by the directors, is that they will return money to the school districts that are participating, depending on how well you've done. That's the amount it's basically based on. And after time, what happens is you have a buildup in there. So currently, what we have built up in there is about $300,000. That's basically where you're cushioning that since in there, that if we do well, we get a larger sum. So over the last two years, we received back $88,000 already.
And whose discretion is it? It's CLIC's discretion on whether we get that back?
And that was my, in actually reading through the other ones, that was what they had too, that it's the discretion of the directors that they have for your, they would actually give, and it was I might be that.
So that sounds like a poison pill, is it right to say that? Which exists in the world, it's incentive or disincentive. So what I'm also sensing is that if we were awarding or not voting tonight, if we were to award this to them, it'd be almost like rewarding them not being responsive. Am I missing a beat there, or is it just some, like, they don't respond to most of the proposal because of their reputation and our history with it?
Right, we've had with them since the 90s.
So... Can you offer more than, I mean, I'm personalizing this, I'm sensing an individual, I feel like, what's going on? So is there some other mitigation or aggravation that you can provide context to me about, which is why they didn't respond? Do you have any insight into what they want?
It wasn't slap a key.
So I did ask, I asked them, you know, why they would actually have a proposal ready. And they said, because they're actually the ones that we would have to leave the call on and put in our letter that we would be dissolving. And then we would also be giving up the money that we have been affording into this account or building up into this account. So you would leave the $300,000, you would not get that back by leaving.
But then it just sounds like they're just saying, okay, I'll scare you. Okay, I'm sure I heard the same thing, okay. So those are like, no, it's very busy, right, the kids are...
No.
Personalizing it.
No, because our stuff, CLIC is actually just gone in. So our, we have a, we actually have to fill out the CLIC, it's basically saying how many teachers, you know, we changed anything in the building? Do we have any construction coming up, anything like that, workers comp, students? So we have to fill that out, some of that to them, and that had just gone to them. The others, we have filled out the same thing, but we also put that online for them that they pulled down and they were looking at it. So that was the difference between them. One was something and one is they, because they were cool, they actually wait till everybody puts in.
So what's the role Gallagher plays, because it says Gallagher, CLIC?
Gallagher, they're actually, it's Gallagher and they're like the umbrella under Gallagher. They're actually the ones who, CLIC is the one who is actually, has the property casualty. You also have the other side where you have the health insurance, but they're not the health insurance, they're the property casualty. So that's why we found Gallagher for that.
I just don't process it, so.
So I have a question, which is, you know, the plan outlined was that we've already, the resolution exists, et cetera.
Yes, we have not handed it in.
Is that, what's the process? Is that resolution rescindable if we indeed hand it in and then were to choose at some point with more information to rescind?
I can answer, I do not have an answer for that. I have asked myself if, you know, if this is the final, if I hand it in, I hand it in by March second, is that absolute that we have a role to go with CLIC? I have not gotten an absolute answer on that, that we could say, but I can ask again.
So it sounds like there is potential, well, there is a need right here from the board for some idea of what our negotiation point is, because it, part of it, I'm concerned with the, what, how much the $300,000 is driving the, you know, the decision, number one. And number two, given our relationship with Gallagher, I don't understand how they help us make a recommendation on choosing them.
I think I'm starting to understand.
Well, you said that CLIC is under...
Is under Gallagher's umbrella.
Right.
Yeah, yes.
And so Gallagher is our consultant for insurance?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And they recommended themselves?
They're not recommending themselves, we're recommending CLIC, but they, they fall under the umbrella of running, CLIC is overseas, that is what happens with it. It's the way the pool works with that. So you have Gallagher, you have the property and casualty that falls under them. And I think we had this discussion last year, if I'm not mistaken. And then you also have the health insurance side of it, but they're too separate. So that's where I think that, that's what Gallagher, Gallagher actually oversees what CLIC is actually offering in insurance and everything. I'm not sure if they would be called a broker, they would, would exactly. I don't work in insurance, so I don't know exactly what the difference is between over CLIC, but I do remember this question last year, if I'm not mistaken. I think you asked it correctly.
I just want to clarify that I understand what's happening here, so. So we put out the RFP, CLIC, which we already have, decided not to submit one. Okay, but others did. But they decided not to submit one, but for some reason we're still considering them, because it's kind of like that, you know, you know those subscriptions where if you don't cancel it, then you're stuck with that subscription? Is what this sounds like to me? So I'm just trying to make sure I under, I am, like, is that in our best interest?
And there's part of it, because you have three, because also too, you would lose the $300,000, that is the other part of it. Because if we actually decide not to go with the workers comp, we would lose the $300,000. We do not, we're not going to get that money. So that's part of it, so we look at having this, you know...
The $300,000 they might in their good...
Exactly.
Right, exactly, right.
Do they have that $300,000 somewhere in a budget somewhere?
Do I have it somewhere? Do I have it in the budget?
Yes.
No. No, because we don't know if we're going to receive it or not, that's the whole thought.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood, that that's, I understand it correctly?
No, no, you understand, the part of it is because you look at a $70,000 difference between the one vendor and then with CLIC. And then the part of it is you have the $300,000, over the last two years, we received $88,000 back out of that. So will we receive the share? I'm not sure yet, you won't know until we actually go in May. I'm not disagreeing, by the way, I understand exactly what you guys are saying, but that's part of it, so we would lose that, that's the only point I'm thinking.
I just want one more point to clarify, if I may. Gallagher, CLIC, is CLIC a subsidiary of Gallagher? Is it an affiliate of Gallagher?
I believe it's an affiliate, I'm not 100%.
Okay, so it is that Gallagher, our advisor, did advise us to sign up with their own company?
Right.
Which isn't bothering to submit it?
That's my...
That's us, yes.
That's good advice.
And you're recommending we take that?
I'm only recommending that because there was only workers comp, there was no property and casualty. So I'll do the workers comp and you're not going to lose the $300,000, that's for incentive. Versus that you could possibly lose, you're not, I mean, we would absolutely lose it if we don't go with them, but what will we also get back, I understand. So they may not get a subsidy yet, for sure.
A couple of questions, because I don't understand insurance at all.
Evil thoughts.
Yeah, yes, yes.
All right. Do we have a possibility to extend with CLIC for three months?
I can ask them, I can absolutely ask them.
So we ask for a three-month extension on our...
So that was, yeah, what, what information does the board need to be able to approve any, yeah? So that's one of your questions?
The other was, the rescindability, or the rescindability of the, if we do submit for revocation of the rights and responsibility. So first question is going to be extend for 90 days and actually run an RFP that gets us viable options that are here. Second question, why, or does it make, again, I don't know enough about insurance, but why are workers comp, school board, legal liability, and student accident insurance all coupled together?
Oh, that's not, one of the, we did actually bid items separately.
Okay.
They're coupled together, they're just showing the dollar amount, those are separate.
So these are actually separate decisions as to who to go with? So there are separate decision, one is to who to go with for workers comp?
Yes.
Who to go, and then who to go with for the other items, which could be CLIC or could be somebody else? The decisions are independent. When you ran the RFP, was that bundled or independent?
It was independent, yeah, it was exactly what we were looking for.
Okay.
It wasn't included with workers comp.
Okay, so can you go with CLIC? So CLIC would give you school board legal liability and student accident insurance for $21,000 and $26,000? Or that just happens to be the current cost bundled together?
Those are the current cost bundled together, and there's actually a bundle on that too.
So that is a bundled offering?
Correct.
As it currently states?
Correct, because I did ask CLIC about that and I said that if we had somebody, if we wanted to use another broker for students and for board, can we use them? And they said, no, because there's a bundling package that goes with that. So I didn't completely answer that.
So that's the second question, or third? I'm just making sure we're keeping track of the questions that we need to have, make an informed decision.
I do have a question. So the RFP was specifically asking for bids that didn't bundle with different types of coverage together? Or could we provide or bundle and not bundle, depending on how they were shot?
No, they went to bundle, that's how they were supposed to put them in. And what they did is they didn't, we had one, there was only one bid on it. And I did call and ask them about that, and they said, oh yeah, we just thought we'd give you a price. So that was it, that was the wicked who did that. So I did, I'm like, who's who did that?
So the RFP was asking for the bundle or was asking?
Was asking, was asking. So what we did is, it was, it was actually just the way we had it here. It was property casualty and/or workers compensation insurance, which includes student accident and fiduciary liability. So when they went in, that's, that's how it was, it was property casualty, then it was workers comp, then it was student, and then it was the fiduciary liability. Those two got bundled together, is how that shows.
So it's cheaper if you get a bundle?
Yeah, that's, well, yeah. Right, but if somebody, so let's say that somebody, you know, actually puts a proposal separately for them. It doesn't mean that you can't go separately with them, because they're going to do it separately. But if this is how they've done it here, you have to take and crunch them all together and see who's offering what. Because you can't go with one that's offering it all bundled and then go with another one that says, oh, I want to do students. That's where the problem goes, and so if I have students in my bundle, I can't say, well, but I like the student price better.
Oh, no, I understand that, but if the RFP is asking our insurance, the brokers that are coming forward, are they looking at it as, we can't be a bundle price, so we're not getting in the venture, which they were making pair?
I see exactly what you're saying.
All this is from my knowledge of insurance companies from commercials.
They have a lot, they have a lot of commercials, so, as much... Cindy, I have another question, which I think I heard, it refers to the elusive $300,000. I believe, I heard that that's common practice with others, is that?
That, when I read through the other two contracts, they did have something in there that said that if there was, if there was a surplus, you know, you wanted up that they did well, that just by the board's direction, it would have to be the board vote, and you can receive something back, yes.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, then while we may forego it there, we could receive it from another vendor?
Correct, you would have to start building up though. And, you know, that's a hope, but right now we've built up $300,000. The others we see, it could be possibly $7,000 when you first start out, so it would be very small starting out.
So the build, I, at some point, it doesn't have to be this evening, but I'm trying to understand this building up. Why would we build up to $300,000?
Just we've been with them since 1990.
So it's, so we're back to it's not real?
So it's them holding it back over time and dispersing it based on whatever formula? And then so with all these numbers and stuff, I wonder, service, you or anyone else with a, I have no idea what quality of service they've provided?
That's a good question.
Is it good service?
No, yeah. I can say that we have had really good service when it comes to workers comp. You know, they're very good at responding to us and they've helped us. They, you know, somewhere where I would say that there needs to be improvement would be cybersecurity. I think that they're, especially in today's day and age, I think that that is something that, you know, you're stumbling through a little bit. I don't think it's just non-value, I think that, you know, with all the risk and everything like that out there, I think that's what we're seeing more of. That's, that's a good question.
So, okay, pretty good, but not knocking out of the park. I'm just, I'm trying to interpret what you're saying, like...
I'd be truthful, I know all insurance that I've ever dealt with, you say, you know, this one's great for the moment, and next year they're okay. You know, it depends on what you, so whatever you really need on purpose, I will get it. I mean, if I look for, you know, cybersecurity and I'm saying, well, you know, they're okay, they're going to be okay. If I say workers comp, they're great, right?
Right.
Do we wrap up?
Oh, yeah. We like to wire directions.
Yep, got it.
Yes, so those are the questions.
Okay.
And the biggest one is the, I think, the issue of the extension, because this is being asked to be voted on at the regular board meeting. So, no?
No, no, no. Right now, Tom?
This is the move, Tom?
No.
Next week?
Right, yes. So that's a lot of uncertainty.
I would have a hard time supporting the current slate that has been put in front of us, because we need more information.
Right.
So, you know, and I would say, without having a comparative from, how can we accept an RFP?
That's the...
From the non-bidder, I don't think that...
And that begs the policy question of how do we, whether our investment, I mean, our policies with contracts? Because there's a reason we went to an RFP, and we can't accept, I don't know how you accept a bid from the lone one that did not submit RFP. It's like, why, I mean, if I worked with another company, even for other issues that we do RFPs with other vendors, it's like, I'll, it doesn't, don't submit one, because it doesn't matter, they're going to pick who they want to pick anyway. So why bother? I, the precedent it sets is really, I don't know if it's good for us at the district, if we have that kind of reputation.
Okay.
Can I jump in? I hate to do this, but I want to make sure we're walking out of this meeting with the right questions moving forward. So can I, at the risk of prolonging the conversation, let me just add, throw these out there. There's a three-month extension, certainly, all right. There is the whole conversation about bundling, right? What proposals counts exist and how does that affect where we are? The next question is $300,000 itself, what, to what extent is this money that we should actually consider in the decision-making process? And the fourth question that I heard that's out there, I think, is about the quality, overall quality of service, right? Can we speak to that specifically? Did I miss something as we take that back and think for next week?
You missed mine.
Yeah.
I think that might be intentional. No, I'm kidding.
Let's rerun the tape then.
What is your question?
No, it somewhat relates to the three months. It really is about, once, if we submit the notice of termination, is there rescindability, if that's a word?
Got it, we walk, Mr....
Walk out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you. Got it. Thank you.
Well, yeah. Well, that's the whole, we're right.
Yeah, that's.
That's the RFP.
And that is the negotiation. Okay. So thank you. Thank you. God bless. Thank you.
I have to sit here again, so.
No, I'm just saying the whole is true because I, it is.
Well, I'm not an insurance person, so I definitely.
I know one.
I've been a learner.
I know one.
Yes, I am. I also come and help us at Boyon.
I used to represent them.
Want to say that loud enough?
You have to be calm.
Yeah, let's go. All right. The next topic on the agenda is the presentation of the district registration, instructional materials and technology fees for 2020, 2021, SAWY. And up is.
Do we need to take a break or?
Yeah, I need a break.
We're going to take a three-minute break because we lost two more members.
You're up, yes. You're on.
So the sentence keeps going, right?
Yes.
That's right.
So, the sentence works.
Yeah, the power book is basically just like, we change down and add.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you.
There you go.
There you go.
Yep.
So what we did is we actually went out and tried to compare schools to see what their fees were. And I have to say, this was a lot of fun because let's talk about bundling again, because that's what happens. It was a little bit difficult trying to go out and look at some of the other schools and compare ours. So what we tried to do is do it by grades and then solve the cost that we actually had as far as the high school goes. What, what we've seen was basically we're, we're in the middle of the path as far as this, you know, looking at the fees. So we're not, we're not far off. But again, I had to take and put everything together in order to try to compare it to the other schools. So I had to take like what we, we call our technology fee, our IMF fee, and also our individual class fees to come up with where we were exactly. After a four-year, adding all four years together, again, we were just in the middle for this. The one that we were low on is behind the wheel. So we're making a recommendation that we go from 170 to 250 for behind the wheel. It still is going to, if we look at this here, and I don't think, oh yeah, I can, okay. So right here, it is actually putting us in line here with Millieville, Roselle, and Donner's Grove. So we would still be at, right in the middle of the path for that too. Our technology fee, this is where I talked about the bundling. The bundling, some of them actually put this into their registration cost and they do not have something separate. For us, we're here in the middle, I would say the middle of the lower end, but also at the end, the, their senior year, they pay $50 a year and they get to keep their Chromebook after they graduate.
Cindy, do those other schools have the same one-to-one Chromebook type setup as we do?
I don't know if they're actually Chromebooks, but they do have technology fees, yes. Maybe, I did see some that also offer waivers, not waivers, I'm sorry, their, what do they call it? Warranties that, that you can actually use, that they can purchase for that. So I do know they have a fee. I just don't know where it's at.
But it's for a one-to-one?
Yeah. Um, our sports fee comparison, again, we are a little bit on the higher end. Well, I say the higher end, but it's $55 per sport is what us, we would pay for a student today. If they were going to participate in sports, you get three sports, three seasons, two sports. So in the end, it would be $165. And again, some of these are bundled, some of them did clubs together, but they may charge $150. And but it's, it's part of the registration fee. We don't put it as part because not every child may participate in something. We, you know, we were asking at the CFAC about it and once my, my child only participates in one. I prefer the individual fee not being, having it bundled into a registration fee. Um, the parking fee comparison, this is not, it's, it's a fee that's charged, but it's not paid to us. So it's not a revenue to us. We actually need to pay the village of Olprup. So this is a fee that they're charging us. This, we don't know what the fee is until the beginning of the, until August. And then that's when we will, that's why we don't actually say this is how much it is for parking because we don't know until the village lets us know. So I, I put in, because I wanted to show the registration fees for waived, you know, for free and reduced. I'm just using, you know, this year's number of students that we had. So for just waiving the fees for registration, and this would include, this did not, let me look here a second. This did not include like, um, the drivers that we pulled out because there was more or less optional. So it was $245,000 is what the school pays for this. And then the cost to eliminate, if we wanted to eliminate the individual grade cost entirely, it cost us $63,000.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand those last two slides.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one.
Okay.
You said, the school pays that, oh, that's what we subsidize.
Correct. That's what we subsidize. We don't pay it because obviously.
We subsidize.
Exactly. We waived the fees.
Is that normal or most schools?
Yes, absolutely.
In the same way that we do it, just from a benchmarking standpoint?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one. Cost to eliminate individual grade fees.
Correct. So these, those were the individual fees that we have, the freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, the individual fees. If we said we're not going, we're not going to have any individual fees whatsoever, then that's what it would cost us to actually waive those. And again, based on the number that we had this year. Free and reduce is already being, uh, the free is actually being waived already. So it would just be the, um, the pain that we would have to include in there.
So between the last slide, which says 245,000, and this slide that says 63, the last slide, that's how much subsidy we propose for what percentage of the students? Just.
So I, I believe it's about 17%.
17%, okay. All right. Thank you.
So then the last slide.
Sorry.
So cost to eliminate, so if you eliminated, if we eliminated the individual grade fees, those slides that were up above, this is what that would total?
Correct. If it was just the individual. So up here, if I go back up, just about. So when I'm talking about the individual grade fees, they're right here. They're really, really small, but there's like the senior right here. There are these fees that are falling into here. The ones that we did pull out, we did say that we would, we noticed here the driver's ed in there. And then the bottom here is the $27.
So are, is there a desire to remove those fees?
No, I was just showing, because we've talked about it in the past about what is exactly the total cost. So I just tried to compare against this year, the number of students we had this year to show what the cost actually is for other students. We did remove a few.
I said we paid for them with our insurance refund. No, I, I, we paid for it with the 60, with the 30 basis points that we make by helping our investment strategy.
Yeah, yes. That's why.
What was?
I'm okay with that.
Sorry. Legitimate question. What was the CFAC's opinion of what should we do on fees?
Uh, the CFAC's opinion had bound to up the driver's ed fee to 250 because we were on the lower end of the pack. This would move us up to be around the law.
And what did they say about the other fees?
The other fees, they were, they were okay with the other fees. Um, the one that, um, again, the one, the one comment that that made was the fact that the participation of the sports, they prefer to have that as an individual and not a bundled package.
Yes. Gina, that's tough.
Who? Wait, Gina.
Do, um, when you all were looking at the fees, did you have that whole equity lens process in this? So I'm curious about, especially with the driver's ed going up to 250. Like, was there a conversation around if the potential that that could diminish opportunity for anyone? Or I'm just curious what your conversation was like on that?
Um, so for that, we, we actually look at everything through an equity lens for this because I know that if there's a student who struggles or a parent who causes this, says, hey, I can't pay the fee or, you know, I can make it in payments, that's what we always look at. So we make sure that as far as that, we know we're giving everybody an opportunity for this. We never want to take that away.
But people have to ask for it.
Um, what they would do is they would, yeah, they normally do that when it comes to registration. And they would see Jackie and they would ask for the waiver on it. So let's say they don't qualify for free or reduced. Normally what they do is they go through us, through the business office. And then we, we either set up a plan for them or we will, will reduce or wait the fees for them.
It's free or reduced automatic?
Uh, free is rabias, um, reduced is 10%.
But it's automatic?
Yes, it's absolutely automatic. Absolutely.
No, Tom, I had one.
No, no, Tom's next. I'm sorry.
I just, I wanted to share just a little bit of the narrative in that dialogue because a key part of discussion was the recognition that driver's ed is a non-mandatory program. So people can opt out of it and do it elsewhere. So it's not a required course and not a required expenditure. So that was, that was a key part of the discussion when the committee made, you know, when we were talking, just that way.
But there is a part of it that is required, the in-class.
Yes, the, the classroom experience is required for all of our students. Um, it's actually one of our graduation requirements explicitly. Behind the wheel, of course, there's a separate component to that. And it's that that this fee is linked to. This fee is not linked to the in-school class experience.
Correct.
So that distinction is important for our.
And things could be like.
Communicated.
Right.
Clear. Yeah, that was, that was.
Oh, okay.
Although from an equity standpoint, we're still on top of waiving for free and reduced automatically because it really is an opportunity.
Right.
That we want to make available, right?
That's correct.
And also too, we do that for our sports and also for our activities.
Matt, then, oh, Tom has one?
I, I do want to echo off of Tom though for a second. They, you know, the, the 250, even when we mentioned about moving it to 250, that was a comment that was made too, is the fact that this is a lot less than sending a student out or your child out to actually get private lessons.
Is there, oh, I'm sorry, let me just stand on this grid. For our students, because I am, that sophomore year is killing. And as mother twins, it was doubly hurtful. And I am in a position to, was, to be able to pay it, but it was still like, oh my God. Public school and really? So do we offer an option upfront where families know that, you know, they abandoned an establishment? That it doesn't have to all be upfront? Or is it that you have to apply for a waiver?
Oh, no, you don't have to apply for a waiver. It's, it's optional if you want to apply for a waiver and then we just work through. But as far as registration.
Yeah, well, in the registration process, I don't believe at any point throughout that process, we explicitly communicate like there's a deferred like payment plan. Is that what you're referring to? Like, oh, we got to break that out throughout the course of the year? We offer that every year to a variety of, of students, but you're right. It, it is nothing that is explicitly stated upfront.
Because that's explicitly stating it so everyone can make the choice that fits their ability as opposed to, it, it feels a little bit shame to have to ask for.
Absolutely.
But that's what we're doing, yeah.
So Karen is here for some clarity.
And it's so in the, in the after-school packet in our information about these.
She was saying that in the after-school, she just was looking where it's at, that there is something in there that says they're about making payment plans.
So is there?
There is, but if I can offer two cents of this, I think it's a good point of maybe sprinkling in more places without it becoming graffiti. But, you know, frequently where we think, hey, this is a spot where we want to reinforce this thing that's also over here that people may have read months ago, maybe didn't even read all that way through, et cetera. So that's, so I think for the degree that we can enhance the communication of the availability of waivers or payment plans and so forth would be helpful. Asterisk comes to mind as a writer. So that's one thing. And an observation that I have, and that leads to a question, is the chart that shows the number of freshmen through seniors who have free lunch or reduced lunch. The numbers for the seniors, the number is 94, and then it's 125, 125, and 161 going to the younger grades. I don't know from the sheet to know whether this is part of a larger trend based on differing standards or what was happening. But it seems like over time that if this is part of a larger trend, this would result in increased subsidies by the school. And so I just want to make sure if that, first of all, I don't know if that's the case because I only have this sample in front of me. But that's something to just keep an eye on if the CFAC or others were fully, you know, looking at that and aware of that. But I can see where the sophomore year with the heaviest fee, it was 161 from last year. Circumstances change, then it can go up or down, but that's, you know, that's a sizable number and so forth. So it's, I'm not looking to quiz on what it is if you know, but that would be helpful to know along the road.
Plus two, um, there's, um, we had a direct certification that we have to download from the state in July. Normally that's what's uploaded. So if that actually comes in from the state, then they don't fill out an application because they're automatically, anything is automatically late. So that is something to, because I believe when I guess might be at about 200, maybe 220 applications a year. So the rest would be actually from direct certifications then.
Okay. So, so but you see my point, you know, I love seniors as an abnormally low number or something, you know, has changed. But this could, I again, not knowing what the pre-year shares and numbers, don't know. And it is around 17% of the student body is free and about 3% reduced.
And we just started doing a reduced two years, one year or two years ago? The waiver for the, uh, the reduced.
I don't, I, since I've been here, I think we've always had reduced.
Sure. It's been in the last three or four years, I would guess.
I don't mind. Yeah, but it doesn't predate me. So that's why.
I do.
So we have data for three years of the trends to be able to track. Because I think to Matt's point, if we have 161 or 26 freshmen on the reduced, those numbers are pretty standard. But is that, has it been like that?
Was it?
Since we're doing this, yeah. Gina, you were very patient.
I, I was just thinking of another piece of information when it comes to the driver's ed about ensuring that, um, like I know that in-class is what's required, but the behind-the-wheel piece is the piece that in areas where they eliminate that piece, they see higher incidences of fatalities, automobile fatalities. So the fact that we have that and maintain that, that's data that I could share with the board from statewide information. So it's, I know it's, um, the requirement is really the in-class, but it's that behind-the-wheel piece that we maintain here that is, has, will really have a long-term impact and also on the accessibility of actually getting a license. Because even if we only had that one piece, and I know we're not talking about, this isn't the conversation that we're having right now, but it's just forefront in my mind that if they only. that if they only have the in-class piece and not the behind-the-wheel, the opportunity diminishes for people to actually get that behind the wheel because there's just, it's just cost prohibitive to do those courses.
And the argument of saying that the, it's more expensive privately is kind of a straw man, what we're talking about, if you can't 41, then you just go without. So what are we? I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand in terms of the comparisons, you know, particularly with the driver's ed, I guess, is, you know, why we are comfortable with where we're placed, why we're trying to, is that being driven by our financial reason that we're saying, oh, you know, we, we're the lowest?
No. It's actually, we're looking at the cost of what the programs costing us, and we've never, we've never been raising the dollar amount that we've been charging. So part of it says that we need to start, you know, we should raise it some. This isn't, this still isn't going to come close to covering the cost of it, but it's, you know, we're moving towards just increasing the fee to offset some of the expenditures we have with it.
So in that same vein, the, with our, you know, you made the comment about the activity sports fees and saying that someone or a couple people on the community finance committee said they would prefer to pay just for the sport their child was in. And what I'm, our fees are, on this one, we're up at the higher end and looking at schools that don't charge activity fee at all. I'm just wondering, same equity aspect, you know, we looked at our information about, and there is a racial disparity in terms of who participates in activities. How, is that being driven by our, our fees at all?
Um, I would say, I would say no, because we actually waive the fees for sports and so if somebody's free or somebody's reduced, they're, they actually get to participate, they're not paying the fees.
Right.
All the equipment that is included with it, there's nothing they have to buy, it's included in. Also too, the same with clubs, they participate in clubs. So I would say no to that. Also too, we have somebody who waived their fees. The same applies for this too, so they are able to participate, and they can participate in all the sports and all the clubs. So there's nothing we actually, the only thing that we don't pay for would be something like homecoming, prom, overseas. That is something that we don't pay, none of the schools. I call the school and I asked them, they were, none of them. And I use 14 different schools to compare to. Those are the only things that don't get waived.
Cindy, that's what you said, homecoming, prom, and then...
Overseas, so when you have somebody who's traveling overseas. Now, what they have, and this is what our students do too, is they actually will try to apply to receive grants somewhere. You have success, you have boosters, you have, uh, collage, you also have the grant, yes.
They won't buy those, so that's right.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And that was exactly what they said they'd do too at the same time.
I will let go when I think I hear Jackie sandwiches, that seems like a pretty steep increase, it's over 40%, and once we've had 250. So, I don't know. So that's just, those are my initial thoughts, like, whoa, you know? Glad that my kids just got through that.
And how is that going to be communicated? Because it is a steep increase from the past years, and I ain't not sure how, as a parent, it would fly for me to hear, well, we hadn't increased in so long and we were below market, so here's, you know, how, how do we explain that in a way that doesn't make you think that we're insane? By we, I mean the board, making this decision.
Can I just interject, just for clarity, because wasn't there a, a limit imposed that we, you needed to file a?
Yes, we have to do a waiver.
Okay.
And it's 250.
Okay, can you just, I, I mean, because that's a process that exists that kind of is around this, so any two sentences, can you just bring that into the dialogue and then continue?
And what you normally have to do with that is, when you're filing your waiver, you could go up to 250, that's what our waivers were now. If you're going to actually ask to go above that, you have to show your expenditures and everything and why you actually think you should be raising above the 250.
So is that why we picked 250?
No, we looked at what the expenditures were and what we were actually charging, and then also too, with 250, the impact it would have on it. So looking at the 250 here was the limit that we can actually go up to before we actually would have to say we were going to do a waiver for something more than 250. We also reduced some of the fees that were in there. So that was the other side of it. We're trying to lessen some of the, you know, costs by reducing some of the fees that were in there. One of them had been towels, if we talked about last year.
If I can just jump in on that point, Cindy, I want to clarify too, and I thank you for bringing that up. If you take a look at the overall fee structure throughout the four years for our students, what we have done by removing the PE towel and cleaning from the four years, by changing the other, by getting rid of the other testing requirement for sophomores, and the additional locker fee that had been part of there, in addition to the PE and hall lock fee for our freshmen, throughout the expanse of the four years, you're really talking about something that is a bit of a wash. And so the, the fees that we're talking about is really a realignment, so I would think that more precise to where it's really at. To illustrate that point more clearly, the PE towel cleaning fee alone was $18 each year, so that's $72 alone throughout the four years of a student being in a high school. You get rid of that $72 entirely, you add in the $75 to the sophomores for the driver's ed fee, and that alone is a wash when you take into account the other things that are there. So now for a parent of a sophomore next year, right, you'd be looking at this and saying, well, that's, 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 only goes so far to make me feel better in the moment. But when you take a look at the fee structure throughout the four years, it's pretty well balanced out.
Has it always been, maybe I'm just pinging up, was it always broken out like this, so you knew exactly what you were paying for?
Last year.
Oh, last year.
Yeah, it was. Well, I can speak to last year when this was presented to the board, it was.
Right.
Previously, I can't speak to that.
For parents, so parents see, know what they're paying for?
I believe it, I think I do, because I don't do the registration sound of it, so...
Absolutely, I can speak as a parent, yes.
Because I had no idea I was paying for towels and cleaning.
Oh, I see.
I was just gonna say that. But maybe, but that was a long time ago, so things could be different.
We can double-check exactly how that's been communicated, but I do believe it's been broken down this way for each grade of each year.
This list is, actually used to be longer too, knocked off a couple of years because we were going back so far. Now, whether that was shown or not, I do not know, but I can say we did go through each and every one of these individual costs to look at it, to make sure what exactly, so the IDs, you have CPR, you have certification, the locks for the freshman, because you get two locks, one for your hall, one for PE, and then the activities in the summers.
And this is, the recommendation is for this to be approved at our regular board meeting?
Correct, yes.
Are there, do people need additional information prior to next week?
It's bundled. It's bundled, one, but I understand the efficiency. I mean, I guess my, my thought is that, I guess I understand all the math left and right, you know, and appreciate you, the context both correct, and to you, Cindy, and this has really been really helpful with that, it's really been helpful in form of our discussion. I guess my one thought is it'd be nice to have that $75 increase come over, maybe a two or three-year phased-in increase, and so I don't know, that could be an option, but in my ideal world, for those people to say, so that maybe goes to some number between those two for a year, and then, like, it's gonna get to 250, and, you know, we're committed to that perhaps, but I just feel like that's, you know, just, I don't know, it's using a steep increase in one possible. And we're not gonna make more money through investments, as Tom has noted, so...
I'm good with that one. So when we look at it too, from last year to this year, it's a $47 increase because that's, you know, last year was 220, and this year it'd be 267. So that's, that's actually the difference if you look at last year's fees that are there.
For sophomores.
For the sophomores, I'm sorry, yes, I'm talking about the sophomores. So that's a $47 increase, it's not even the 75, yeah.
I, in our, the memo that, the company's, this report or this recommendation, it would be helpful for the rationale of, that you, the context you talked about, Greg, in terms of, you know, over the four years and the things that were taken out. So it's on the record, not just the report, but, you know, for the, that is memorialized to the rationale.
I think, I think we did have that in the workover.
About the towels and...
Yes, yes, it's the, it's the summary findings, and...
In the, in the memo?
Summary findings on the top page, yeah, it's referenced in that. Maybe flesh it out more might be helpful.
It just was, you talked about it, it's there, I think it would be helpful to have a little, the story for the purposes of private doing this. That's, yes, okay. All right, we're moving on.
Okay, next up, and the last item in our finance section, is the presentation of the school resource officer intergovernmental agreement and amendment, and up for that is, if I have your answer.
So this is school resource intergovernmental agreement, part two. We brought this before you in September of last year, and the board rightfully found some issues with appendix B specifically, there was some old language that was left over from when the contract was originally put together. We went back, we cleaned that out, we actually got it to the point where it really is reflecting the intent of the agreement as we, we rehearsed with the Village of Oak Park. And also some other, some of the other changes that we saw in there were really because of legislation that had come through with respect to school resource officers, it's been updated to reflect current legislation in terms of sharing information, things like that. The, the part of it I'll just mention, because I think it was confusing to me, it might be confusing to you, is that in this, when this SRO position was first set up, I believe the Village of Oak Park provided it to the school district for no charge. And then for a period of time, we had to then pick up the entire charge, and then there's a statement in here a lot of time when we go back to 50/50. So in case you're wondering, especially specifically appendix B, why it's ordered the way it is, that reflects the intent to, once we settle up and we basically are sharing the cost, we're gonna go forward at a 50% cost per each. So that's, I know that confused me, but that was the intent of it, so we cleaned up the license to reflect that intent. So are there other questions regarding this, or you guys?
I have just a couple.
Sure, sure.
On page four, a term, it says it commences on July 1st of 2019. We're signing a contract now that commenced then.
Okay, well, we can, we have to commence whenever we want it to commence.
Yeah, probably shouldn't be backdated like that, unless, you know, yeah, so I would, whenever we're actually signing.
That was page four, 12, I'm sorry.
Page four, term, section six, term. And then you may wanna, trying to see where this is, it's in the last, next to last paragraph of appendix A. You may just want to read it because the last line of that, the last sentence there just doesn't make sense. It says, "The training would be at the expense of the school district and is subject to the approval of the chief of police if the chief of police is able to assign another officer to assume the duties." The if part, and you go on, makes no sense as a modifier of the prior part of the sentence, it just doesn't make any sense. So you may want to read that and see if some language was supposed to be deleted that didn't get deleted.
Yeah, help me, there are, what page is that on?
I will help you.
Page five. Where's training, it's in red?
Yeah, 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 got it, got it.
That's my speed words.
Oh, I had, yeah, I, that same one, I know I'm jumping, I cut the line, but, I, my understanding was, when we negotiated this aspect about training, it says here, "The school resource officer may be asked to participate." My understanding was that that was an expectation, that they would participate, not that they, it was optional.
Yeah, I don't think we could force them to participate.
Well, then they gotta go.
Or they're...
It's a contract, of course it would be.
At our school.
That's a requirement of the...
It's our students. Where, where is that? Training, it's the same, it's training, same place.
Critical school resource officer will participate.
Yeah.
Shall, will, whatever.
But that was the whole reason we put that section in, was because we're doing restorative practices with our security staff, with teachers, with everyone, and if they're going to be a part of our school community, they have to participate as well.
Specifically, specifically the school resource officer is a critical piece of restorative practices are gonna be done while, like, they need to, they need to be thoroughly trained, and, and their training is a little bit different based on like their experience as officers, so it's really critical that they have to do the training.
There's no argument, I think. The intent of the way, and the way I'm reading this, is we may ask them to participate, we may not.
But we, but we not.
What we're seeing is that we need to, it needs to specify that we are going to ask them.
Okay. I'm with you, I got it.
Just to make sure.
But honestly, the way I'm reading it now, it's like we, it wasn't, I know.
Well, there's a distinction, shall we, shall participate or shall we ask to participate? There is a difference.
Participate.
Shall participate.
Yes.
Okay, no asking.
Shall do it.
Sort of make sure those...
Part of what we expect of the position.
Hi, how are you? I asked a couple of questions in notes, and, and I think one is, is a follow-up just about the, the dollar value, so I'd appreciate that one. But one part I don't believe was addressed, which is, does summer school count? When we say schools in session, are we, do we count summer school as, do we have a school resource officer? We do not. We do not. Okay, so it's only for the 174 days or whatever it is? There's some additional days, but it's like 182, something like that.
There's 182, and then...
Yeah, it says in the agreement, it says 182.
There's some other days, some other events, like registration days and so forth where they're there.
And some sporting events.
Yeah. So what do we do when we have summer school? We don't have an SRO here. We do have basically these presence if we need them, but we don't have an officer here on site. I mean, I, if we're paying for an officer for a full year, I mean, I don't know, I would think we would want that service, but I don't.
It just, it just makes me curious if there's, like, we still have... It just makes me curious if there's, like, we still have students here in the summer. So like, if we don't have an officer in the summer, but we feel the need to have the officer the rest of the year, I'm just trying to understand why there would be a differentiation. But I guess, I'm not clear on that.
Well, it's probably the extent, again, I'm not, this was not my decision in inheriting this. I can only assume that the logic was, it's, it's much less, there's fewer students here, the day is abbreviated, so that the, and typically the, um, the disciplines is, is much, there, there is really the same level of activity with respect to discipline, uh, that happens during the school year. Again, I, I'm not here to justify one versus the other, uh, but that's probably the logic that was applied when this was put together.
And it begs a bigger discussion about the, what our use of a SRO, because the things that you just talked about in terms of discipline, kind of, uh, if we're moving towards a school community culture of warmth and restorative practices, would those, what we, what is our SRO, I guess, what does their presence mean in our building? And that's not a discussion for this evening, but it is one that I have, uh, repeatedly wondered about. And I think seeing this here in terms of the agreement and the, uh, the cost. And also, a little surprised, I would love to understand the particip- participation in curriculum. I know this question has been asked before about our SRO. What, how have we evaluated their presence in terms of participating and being a positive presence in the school environment? And, you know, the things that are listed under that section.
The, who's the answer then?
It does have, I'm just, it's.
There is a, there's a process we go through on a yearly basis where, I believe it's a half a dozen, we get a half a dozen different, uh, people are asked throughout the school. Primarily the deans and myself and the security staff are asked to rate the SRO on a set of criteria. Uh, I'm not sure, I have to look to see what, what these are. I'm not sure they specifically match to that, but there is a, a yearly process of evaluation where we provide feedback that actually goes into the, uh, police officers' evaluation from the police department. So our input is, is requested at that point.
Yeah, I, and I, I think what the question I'm asking is a little more, um, a deeper dive into what, um, if that matches what they're asking for, matches what we, our, our expectations and needs are, and just what it means. How do they, do they participate in, I mean, the things that we have here in the contract, are those being met?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, it's exactly right, the question is, are we even asking them to meet them, is really the question.
Well, then if not, then, then why are we, why are we?
We have the officer.
Yeah. And that's not directed at you, it's just.
No, no, I, I got it, I got it, yes.
And I have a question, and I'll leave it to you, Mike, if I think for Greg or for Joy Lynn. And it is in, and it's about our responsibilities, and it is in appendix B. And it comes up near the end, it's in new paragraph five on page four of appendix B. And it, or new paragraph six, I should say, old paragraph five. It says, "School officials will share information with law enforcement officials where student misconduct in school or at school activities is likely to extend to the community or involve an offense for which reporting is required by law." How are we prepared to actually comply with this? Have we come up with a working definition of the officers of what is likely means? Are, do we have, do we have administrators trained in, in what is likely means? And what the different reportings required by law are? And who oversees all that and makes sure that we could actually comport with our legal responsibilities?
You said appendix B, I'm still looking for that, I see the letters in appendix B, but you referenced paragraphs.
I guess new paragraph six.
Here, right down here. Okay. Yeah, we can look at that and try to get a more complete answer for you. I think that, um, there are a variety of ways that we, you know, currently do share information with our SROs in compliance with, uh, you know, legal requirements that come to us. That's part of the answer you're looking for, but there's more that's in there, so we'll take a look.
And, and I'm assuming this is a question, but I'm assuming our attorneys have vetted this from a compliance with protection of student information to make sure that whatever.
That was correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure about that. Cause we, we have found in my old school district that there were some areas where we hadn't quite vetted that with our lawyers, and we were doing something wrong, so it's really good to have that.
So we have the questions needed to be answered to move this forward?
Right.
Okay.
Can you hold me to that please? I'm sorry, because I just, I have.
Right, you go ahead.
You got it.
You're gonna go through it now?
Yeah. I'm, I'm, no, so, no.
I think I got it, seriously.
You all can first, like, during our next break.
Okay. Okay.
We're equally at home, we're at the commission or other times.
I'll start the old bit.
Right, next.
We're gonna switch the, the agenda.
Oh, that's right, so we've, uh, we're gonna switch the, or the, uh, uh, agenda item here. We're gonna move the update on the RFCC childcare, uh, to this point. And so that is, uh, both Dick Chappell from the RFCC and, uh, my co-adjunct.
Tell me what was up here.
Because.
I'm too busy trying to figure out my question.
Yes, thank you for your patience, Dick.
That's a patient, of course.
Okay, so this has been a long and winding road. I want to, I know it's the hours late, I want to take you through quickly a few items here we wanted to just cover with you, just to, uh, update, uh, the team, everyone here on the, on the timeline, and, uh, where we landed with respect to some of the options that we had put forward. And I know there were some questions with respect to the, uh, we'll call it the business model of the RFCC. So, uh, Dick is here to help us with, uh, getting into some of those things. So, just to review quickly, uh, starting in May, we had the original DCFS report where the issues came up with respect to the egress, secondary egress. We, uh, started working on those, uh, about a year later, um, to explore some solutions from June to November. We came up with some remediation options. Uh, we presented some of those, uh, to the board in December. Really what we presented in December was a complete renovation of the space, which had a price tag of about three quarters of a million dollars. Uh, in January, we took another look at that to not do a complete remodeling, but to look at, was there any way to address the egress issue that had been pointed out in the original, uh, the, the original, um, inspection report? And we couldn't find a, an egress issue that was going to be workable in our setting. So that was in January. So in, um, and also in January, uh, Dick, uh, basically contacted DCFS, requested another licensing inspection, which is a yearly, uh, yearly event, I believe, is he really correct?
Actually, our lic- our licensure moves every three years.
Three years, okay, so, uh, you requested, since it was coming due in September of 2020.
Correct.
Okay. So then, uh, once that was, uh, inspection was requested, the fire marshal came out mid-January and did another, uh, a different fire marshal came up from the one who did the original inspection and produced the report. Uh, that report, that fire marshal, I would say, uh, was, was willing to work with us on addressing the egress, the secondary egress issue. Rather than starting with where the last report left off, this fire marshal was willing to work with us and say, "We will work with you to find another egress issue," which basically eliminated the problem we had with secondary egress and the concern we had about it. So that's, that's the headline, okay? So that, this new fire marshal basically said, "I'm gonna start with a clean slate, we can go through. There's another egress that we can use that would be acceptable from a safety perspective." Well, in, in the process of the inspection, some fairly, I would say fairly minor items were part, were, uh, pointed out, about $15,000 worth of items, things like smoke detectors, uh, fire safety glass, door closers, those sorts of things. Those are commonly pointed out as you go through a building. Uh, we'd be doing these items no matter what, so we're basically in the process of remediating them. Right now, that, that remediation should be complete by the end of March, at the end of spring break. And, uh, that's sort of where we are with respect to that, Mr.
I'm just gonna ask a quick question. So, does the second report from the fire marshal in any way legally obviate the prior report? And I'm asking that because let's say there's a fire and something bad happens, and we didn't do the remediation we were told to do in 2018, we did the lesser remediation that we were told by the second. Are we in the legal clear? Did, the, is, did, did he give us anything that negates that prior finding that says you need to do construction legally?
I'm Dick Chappell, I'm the director for the community center. Um, to address Ralph's question, um, the initial fire inspector that came out in May of 2018 just did not approve exiting through the auto shop area. He did not specify that there was another specific route that we had to follow. So as a result, the fire inspector who came out in January of 2020 did a, a rather extensive walkthrough and looked for other alternatives that would, in essence, meet the criteria for a secondary egress.
And what is the secondary egress now?
That was going through the hallways. There's, there's actually second and third. Third is through the, uh, there are, uh, what do you wanna call it, safety steps that go up through the windows.
That little ladder.
Yes, yes. Uh, the secondary egress is going through the hallway, which would then, in essence, be going south down the hallway, as opposed to going more about the Erie Street door.
Okay, so, we're basically in the process of remediating those. Uh, the space sharing agreement we have currently with River Forest Community Center expires June 30, 2022. And has a lot of, has a, a number of things which specify the, uh, some of the terms of, of the agreement. Uh, and some of the questions that, that, uh, I think, um, Dick answered in his response to some of the board questions in terms of what's the priority for admissions, obviously, our, any students we had that had need to use the, the daycare facilities would be first, our faculty and staff are next, and then, I go as a community next, or, community next, and then anyone else would be the, the order of admission, that's spelled out in the space agreement. It also talks about our use of the space in the River Forest Community Center for our site program, in, in addition to how, uh, the daycare program uses these facilities here. Um, the termination clause, after the four-year term, there's a one-year notice. So the four-year term is really the, uh, the term that is term, that is ending June 30 of 2022. So, um, I, I think I've already talked about this in terms of the renovation option that we explored. Uh, and we're, we're basically on the third item here, which is the remediation, doing these door closures, smoke detectors and fire rated glass. So our recommendation is to complete these, we're gonna complete the remediation in any case, so that's going to happen. Uh, but we plan on developing a, a further recommendation in conjunction with the RFCC to determine what our long-term plan should be for space sharing going forward. We'd like to have that completed and presented to the board by June of 2021, a four-year before the, the term, termination of the existing space sharing agreement. That's all I had.
Um, I'll go down this path a little bit. Um, why was the secondary egress out through the auto shop previously? Is it now back out through the same door? I assume we're going out through the same door, in one case we're going north, in one case we're going south. Is that the primary and secondary egress?
That's correct, I think the other egress that was orig- I'll help you with this, Dick. I believe the other egress was not going out the hallway, but going down the hallway out through the auto shop, correct?
That was a secondary.
Yeah, so it's a different, it's a different exit. Uh, the day, the daycare has an exit into the hallway, it also has an exit out into a passageway that leads downward into the auto shop, so it's a different set of doors. So the secondary egress was coming out of those doors, not the hallway doors, and going down the ramp, exiting via the auto shop.
Okay, and the, the fire, I'm not gonna second guess the, the fire marshal here, so.
Uh, the, initial report, and this is, um, Dick, you said that, uh, it was never filed, or it wasn't the, the report that where we first came, um, made aware, where it was $750,000 of necessary things to cover. You said the reason that one is nullified is for what reason, again?
You're, you're asking about the fire inspectors.
Yeah.
Uh, the original report just said that you, we could not use the exit, uh, a secondary egress through the auto shop. It did not specify where the next, where the secondary egress had to be, it just said that that was no longer acceptable.
But that report also had a lot of other stuff in it. And so that's the, the, the challenge I'm having with, um, we're only talking about the, the egress issues, but that report and all the pictures that we saw pointed to a lot of, uh, issues that made that space not ideal for preschoolers.
There's, I guess, and I'll be the first to admit, it's not an ideal space, but it's functional and it's also licensable. And so that, therefore, we just may deal with it.
And the last question I had was in terms of the priorities of who is, you know, it's first, it's supposed to be our team, parents, and then, uh, staff, that was, are we, is that, is the center at capacity?
No, we are not.
So it's never been an issue where there was a team parent or a OPRF staff member that wanted a slot, but it wasn't available because of, those slots are already being taken by others outside of that?
No, and, and actually, during, uh, I believe this is the 13th year that we have run the program, we have never turned away a, uh, OPRF high school student. Um, there have been some times where a staff member wanted to enroll, let's say, in February or March, then there may be a little more of a challenge as far as being able to get that person in. But, um, again, I, I think that we've done a very good job of accommodating people. Um, and, and including sometimes somebody had to start maybe a month later than what they would have liked because that's when we would have the opening.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on the financial analysis data. Uh. Um, which, you know, for future, one is, I left the last meeting with the understanding that the employees were all River Forest, uh, River Forest CC employees. On, on this, it states OPRF HS salaries, so I'm, you know, I don't know if it's just labeling or misunderstanding, but it reads to me like it's not, so can you clarify what that is?
Yes, actually, I believe you're talking about this sheet, Tom, with the.
Yes.
Right, expenses, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, those are all our employees, meaning all the community centers employees. So we refer to it because it's easier to designate, since the high school is one of our program areas.
Yeah, it's just, reading, reading it, it looks like OPRF employees. So you're, that, that answers that one. And the other is, you know, in terms of the business case, you know, this covers the expense side, but not the, the revenue side. So again, as we understand, as we try to understand the business model, how does that work? It would be helpful, I mean, you mentioned students, do students pay?
No.
So, so, again, and that would be helpful, just in understanding that aspect.
And, and actually, that's part of the space sharing agreement. Any high school student does not pay. Typically, they are subsidized by the Department of Human Services, and what. Typically, they are subsidized by the Department of Human Services, and whatever the difference is, typically, there's a copayment that's involved for anybody that's subsidized by DHS. The Community Center does not charge a student that difference.
And are there different rate structures for employees versus just citizens? I mean, just, you mentioned, if there's a single?
And what is that, what is the rate?
Currently, the infant is 325 a week, toddlers is 305, and preschoolers are 275.
So, is it, we don't have that information?
Okay, I can provide that, that's, I mean, I.
Well, that was one of the asks, was the business?
The business case.
Right, so what is the, you know, we have the costs and the share expenses, but we don't have the revenue.
Well, actually, the first, the first line item on this is our income, which is listed at, what, as part of the overall budget for the Community Center, the child care program here at the high school, the budget item as part of the Community Center's overall budget is $560,000. The overall budget for the Community Center is roughly 2.1, 2.2 billion.
So that $560,000 that?
Is specifically for this program here.
And it is all obtained through the fees?
That is correct.
So it would be good to have the breakdown, please, of the, the cost per the various, you know, aspects of infants, toddlers, preschoolers, and the numbers of each. And Dick, I did have a question, when, I don't know if it's for you or for Mike, but when this initially came to the board back in January, December? December? Were there any parents of current husky pups that had questions about the report? The Fire Marshal report and their report that was sent to the board in December?
I don't know that they had questions about the Fire Marshal's report, there was questions as far as what impact it might have on our overall program. I know there was one of our participants, I think he sent the same letter to the E200 Board, expressing concern that the program was going to continue.
So that was the only one?
That is, that's the only written correspondence we have.
Just a follow-up question, this might be for Glenn, which is, the program at River Forest Community Center that is operated by us, are those OPRF employees?
Yes, we have three teachers working there, and we have seven paraprofessionals working there.
Do you have a question?
Jackie, my question's a business model question, I think it's probably best held until we talk about the business model of this sometime later.
Well, I, it's good to, great to have the question out there, just so there's expectations put out there, what information is?
Sure. With changes to this building coming up over the next couple of years, would refresh my memory as to what happens with this space, and does it require renovation and investment on our part?
It's like in the fourth phase of, like Project Four, there is such a thing. So the one thing that's happening in the first, Project One, is the infant room needs to move north to make space for the special ed changes coming. So that's really the only change that's been approved as part of, I mean, there's things that are in the master plan, but they're pretty far down the way in the master plan.
And for this particular program, it doesn't pay any rent to the high school, nor to the River Forest Community Center to run this program?
No, the space sharing agreement, that's our, our space there with their space here. There's no, there's nothing.
And I guess my point is that, in the scheme of an overall childcare program, it's totally subsidized by either River Forest or OPRF, from a space standpoint?
Yes, that's correct, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify the question I had that was piggybacking off Tom's in terms of the fees, and for each of the, like you just talked about, the infant program needing to move to a different space, knowing what the breakdown is of students, faculty, because if we're running a program that is predominantly for the community, which was not the intention of this model, to my understanding, it's just, it's helpful to know what we're, you know, what kind of, what we're doing. The space sharing agreement, what we're doing in the Community Center is for the students, and the intention here was this was for students as well, and families, you know, but it seems that that is broadened out to even outside of OPRF and River Forest. So it'd be helpful to understand what exactly, you know, our childcare program is. Or, excuse me, our River Forest Community Center childcare program housed here, but the initial agreement was, the rationale was for students and staff. So I have that information.
Numbers, essentially.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so my third, two, three, any other questions? That's the way you're saying. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's go back up, if we could, to the instruction part of the agenda, and move to the career and technical education program evaluation, I'm gonna switch.
My quick way of introduction for this one, the goal of this information presented for you here today is to really do two things. First, as you know, last year about this time, the board approved a new position at OPRF, and that's our post-secondary pathway coordinator. And so we spent the better part of this year, up until this point, trying to get a good feel for what our kind of real working goals are for this program moving forward, and so that's, that's a big kind of outcome of this presentation here today, to say for the next few years, this is really where we want to go as far as our post-secondary pathway is concerned, and how that integrates into the overall academic plan that we have for the organization. So we're gonna speak to that most primarily. We're also gonna get some information on about use, and some ideas about how we plan also to track data moving forward with this program. So we really kind of see this as we move into future years, it's kind of our baseline report for this program, and from here, we're gonna grow and move forward with that. And so, in the presentation that we have here, we're not gonna be going over every single slide that we have here, but we're gonna give you a good overview of the information that we pulled together and help that up for some questions. So with that said, Sarah Worsted, our post-secondary pathway coordinator, is here.
Hello, everybody. I will refrain from talking about bundles and that sort of, and I, I'm gonna just kind of briefly go through these, there's more information behind all of this, but you guys can actually find that on the web, I'm not gonna go into detail. This was really, I reported out at Community Council last week, so I gave them some background information about why we were doing this, Perkins Five, that kind of thing, so you're free to peruse that. And, you know, I guess Perkins Five is a good starting point, I think, for our purposes, and actually, you've got a handout Greg is gonna bring around, I mean, this is gonna be one of the frameworks from which we're working, you're gonna have two of them, the one we're looking at right now outlines career pathways. So if you're not familiar with what pathways are, there are 16 career clusters, which is the slide just before this, and it basically breaks down everything, you know, it's a grouping of occupations and broad industries based on commonalities. So pathways goes a little bit further in depth, and out of those 16, you're gonna get 79 career pathways. So right now, what we currently have, and I'm gonna give you the real abbreviated kind of fast forward to the Perkins, and why it's important. Perkins, and you can see it in the budget report at the very start of what you have on the, I think it's the second page, we do get, also you can have money through Perkins that helps to fund our CTE courses, so this is strictly for career and technical education purposes, and our job is to make sure we're meeting what the state requires of us, which is mandated by the federal government. Right now, we do a really good job checking boxes, we've done a good job for a very long time to receive that money. Where we are looking to grow the program is to kind of meet this greater expectation of the state that has been put out there, starting with Barack Obama. So Perkins Five was reevaluated, they looked at us and said, yeah, this is great, you've got a bunch of stuff going on, but where is the continuation for our students? How are we seeing them through from eighth grade through graduation, and making sure whatever their pathway is, and if you know what it is, and the pathways, it can be anything from a trade through law school. So, you know, I think there's a misunderstanding that we talked a lot about at the Community Council, about what it, what it means when we talk careers. For a while, I think, I've been a counselor here, if you, if you weren't aware, for 15 years prior to me taking this, so careers was kind of a taboo word. And in this work, it forces us to kind of reframe how we're looking at things, because we're all in a career, doesn't matter, you know, who you are, what you're doing. So the Perkins is now asking of us to get a little more specific, and this outlines for us, the specific goals from Illinois for 2020 through 2024. And a lot of the work I've been doing lately surrounds what we have to do to improve, you know, what is our plan moving forward here? Yes, we're checking the boxes to meet the minimum, but what are we doing to take it a step further? And so the grant is tied to our local needs assessment, and that is something I've been spending probably the bulk of my time on, I'd say, in the last few weeks, along with all the other regional components of our EFE, so these are the schools that are tied to Triton. Everybody who goes to Triton, we're all part of one regional district, our funding's kind of lumped together, and we have one director, Ann Catherine. So we've been working really closely as a team to make sure that our goals are aligned as a group, and then coming back here and meeting with the stakeholders on campus to make sure we're then taking those and making them personal to OPRF. That's really good. So we did start out mostly for our own interests, and then it actually turned into something that's, this data's from us anyway, but we were curious to know, or, you know, starting in 2017, the last three years, first of all, working on by race, you know, who's enrolled in career and technical education courses, and, you know, has that increased, decreased? Is there a disproportionate number of students in relation to our student body? So if you start at this slide, you can see, and Greg and I looked at this data last week, it's pretty proportional to our student body. Now, when we look at this, we have to think of what we're talking about in terms of enrollment, this is per enrollment, per student. So you could have one student who is enrolled in three CTE classes, and they're gonna help three times towards this number, so it's kind of an important factor, and it's actually gonna lead me into some of the goals that the state has outlined for us for completion. So, you know, here you can see that it kind of stays the same, and then there's actually a slight dip last year, but nothing significant statistically. So our goals that we've outlined in your overview really focus on sustaining this and growing current programs that are already successful. And I'll get into the programs that we currently have, and what looks like success to us, and where we want to go with that.
I just asked a question about the, with the grad student enrollment in CTE courses by race?
Yes.
Is there also a breakdown for what courses students are taking by race?
So we can do that, you know, it's just a matter of disaggregating the data that we already have, but that is kind of next steps in terms of what we're looking at in growing these programs in completion, and it does tie in to exactly what we're talking about, creating pathways that are meaningful to students. So, I like to call it à la carte registration, I think our kids like to take, I wanna take foods, because it's fun, and it shuts off the applied art box, and then they're done, and they never take another class in foods. And they might wanna be a lawyer, a doctor, but they don't take a pathway that aligns with that, because their friends are taking something else, or it fits better in their schedule. And as a counselor, you know how tight those schedules are, and if you've had students go through here, you know how tight those schedules are. So really, the complication here is figuring out, taking what a college-bound student needs for college admissions, partnering up with what we're talking about in terms of our district goals with dual credit enrollment, AP enrollment, and including those students who may not be college-bound, how do we make that all work together? So we are including students that are representative of our general population, but also representative of the opportunities that are out there. So that's kind of the overarching goal, but yes, that broken-down data is very helpful in terms of, you know, where are we headed? It's great to have the data about where we've been, but if you don't know which classes students are choosing and why, it really doesn't help us.
And how are they directed to classes? Because I, I'm just, I mean, you know, like you said, a student taking cooking and culinary to fulfill a requirement, but are there students that are, you know, assuming or being directed into certain pathways that, I'm looking at a childcare provider or nursing assistant, you know, in cosmetology, things like that, are those being driven by, you know, kind of their achievement level? I just wanna understand how we're directing our students, that it's indications that there's a potential racial component?
Yeah, and that is actually one of the other goals to what I'm seeing in terms of, you know, not, there's two things going on, you know, there's the state requirements, and then there's our local goals, and our local goals always surround race. And so for me, what I've, and as a counselor, and somebody who saw this firsthand for 15 years, there is a gap there in terms of how we are guiding our students and what tools we're using. There are tools out there that are actually very helpful, new tools that are very useful that weren't even there a couple of years back. So, one we're piling right now is called Use Science. So if you're familiar with the Avions, there's a component, it's called, we call it Do What You Are in-house, and it's a Myers-Briggs, it gives them a personality profile breakdown, it helps to funnel them towards their specific areas of interest based on basic skills and abilities. The Use Science program actually goes even further in depth. So I've been working with some, you know, special ed is actually piling in in a couple of areas, and I'm working with our employment team to see how things are going there, but we're actually talking about utilizing that earlier on, so freshmen or sophomore year, letting the students take that, looking at that, when they sit down with their counselors, if we could somehow get it done before that freshman year meeting, which I don't know is even possible, because the registration process is so early, but that information is really helpful in terms of creating these pathways for them. So, you know, my goal is to introduce this stuff in that eighth grade registration meeting with the counselors to say, you know, not just check the boxes, but let's actually look at what your student's currently interested in, yes, it can change, a pathway can change, just like a career can change for people, but if we can be a little bit more intentional with our planning, so that, and if you look at Project Lead the Way, if you're familiar with that program, it's kind of intended to be a pathway from freshman year on, it's already built into the program. We have the CNA program, which you referenced, that one is also a pathway in and of itself, which we kind of took down and developed from Triton, but we adapted it to our school.
I also wanna add how, how fast-growing and important this area is for the school, so the state recognizes this, and so it's not just defining pathways, and then traditionally, when we think about them in a school, we have like this, you know, this age-old idea about these being tech programs or vocational programs, right, that are specific and in some ways distinct. that are specific and in some ways distinct from the academic pathways that we have. The state is actually, they're really aware of this, and they're pushing the schools right now to align all of their coursework, all of their electives into the existing pathways that you see on this sheet, to the extent of giving us guidance documents very recently, they just came out last week, about how we are aligning our advanced placement courses into these pathways. So when kids come in and they define these pathways using Use Science and other tools, this is not something that is specific just to those kind of CTE elective courses that our kids might take, but it's something that can help guide their entire course-making patterns throughout their years here. So it's much more a purpose-driven approach, and developing that is where we want to go.
Well, and a really important component to that is the entry and exit point. So something that they really stress at the state level is understanding that a student can enter in, let's say child development is a really good example of this, they can step into that intro to child development, they can take it as far as going to Triton to finish out that certificate so that they can work in a preschool. Now, you might have a student who's interested in education but wants to teach at the secondary level. We now have the pathways to education, and that is our newest pathway that we created. And that one will allow a student, let's say they start out thinking, I want to work in a preschool, they take those prerequisite courses and realize, you know what, I actually, I'm observing, and actually, the conversation earlier was playing in my mind, because there is the observation component of these classes that way back in the day was part of that community center bond that we have. And so those students can then say, you know what, I'm gonna switch from this early childhood pathway, and then I'm gonna really look into this post-secondary. Now we have an option for them to take college-level courses as a senior over at Concordia to try them all out. So does that student necessarily end up going into, you know, post-secondary? Or do they choose the early childhood, or maybe they choose something completely different? That's kind of the goal, to allow them to do that while they're here versus spending time and money after they graduate. Does that help? And then this one is probably no surprise to many people. Historically, females have been underrepresented in career and technical education, and that has not changed much. Over the years, I've been doing career-type counseling in my whole career of counseling, and this has constantly been, if you find a student who's a female engineer, you've got like a golden gift sitting in front of you. So, you know, this is another goal. This is one of these areas that we want to focus in, along with keeping the lens of race at the forefront, is increasing what they call non-traditional careers for females. So, you know, we do have these programs set up. What are we doing to promote them? How are we sustaining students who are in there? Because I had a roommate in college who was at the engineering program at U of I, and she was a female sitting with a room full of men, and it was as cathartic as it could be. And that support system is really huge, and I think that's something we have, an area to move for growth. How are we supporting our kids once they're in there, if they are not a traditional student of whatever variety we're looking at? So this, again, just to summarize, is our district goals related to gender and race. These are our current pathways. So these are the ones that we already have in place, and the time, we've talked about a lot of these already. So cooking and culinary falls under there. Automotive is another one that I see, we actually have the beginning stages of automotive already set. We have an opportunity to send more students off-campus to work with Triton by junior and senior year and become certified by the time they're graduated. It's a matter of a couple logistics at this point. So that's one I can see as kind of shoring up in the next year. Engineering technology, entrepreneurship, we have a fabulous program. If you haven't looked into the incubator classes, and that's what I think is very interesting, if there is anything going on. Nursing assistants, the pathways to education, radio and television broadcasting and technology, and then web page and digital multimedia. And again, this is how the state defines them, it's not necessarily what we're calling them in-house. And that is another one of my goals, is to make sure that the language that the state is speaking is actually brought in-house, because some of our teachers don't even understand, you know, what a pathway is and what does this mean, and why are we talking about it? So that's one of my goals as well, is to do some professional development, and I know not only with the kids, but with the teachers, potential future pathways. And again, this kind of taps into one of our previous discussions you guys had going on here. I've already started meeting with our municipalities in town. So I met about three weeks ago with the chief of Oak Park Police. And we were talking about, you know, to me, as a counselor, I think we don't have industry here. We don't have the same resources as like Alida, who's surrounded by factories where they can send their manual factory. We're never gonna have that, that's just not how we're set up. But there has to be a way to get our students this work-based experience. And that's what the state defines, that, you know, we need these internships, micro-internships, shadowing days, employable jobs. So I met with the Oak Park Chief of Police, I sent an email out to him and the Oak Park Fire Station, and Oak Park Police Chief jumped on it right away and said, come meet with us. So they are really excited about partnering up, and, you know, really, we haven't defined much. We had one meeting, it was the HR Director, the Chief of Police, and a couple of his people. But they are ready and willing to work with our students to kind of, you know, tap into some of that cultural stuff that we're talking about, that creating that culture. And we joked a little bit, but it's not really funny, you know. We shouldn't see the resource officer only when there's something happening, that's not good. We talked about that, how can we create that relationship between our student population and the police force? I'll be meeting with the Public Works, Oak Park Public Works, who has a direct pipeline into employment right out of high school. They're actually working on their own apprenticeship program as we speak. So that's really exciting, a possible opportunity for our students. And the firefighters are in two, I have yet to meet with those last two components, but that's one I'm really excited about in terms of giving our students some of that hands-on work-based experience. We already have what we need to set up the emergency medical technician program over at Triton with the dual credit that they offer. Again, it's just about shoring up details, making sure the students are aware of it, and enrolling them, and making sure we know where they are during the day. Polished Nail Salon right on Lake Street is interested in partnering with us for nail technician certificate. It's an 18-month certificate program. And the one example I gave to community council was, she has a young lady that put herself through the hall doing nails. She was a certified nail tech. So, you know, it's kind of reframing and thinking about these certificates as a stepping stone to another, either within the same pathway or just an opportunity to create, an opportunity, is what I'm saying, you know, create an in for somebody who might not have it. Hasn't held gym bar room, we already have running. Those are programs that we've had running for three years. My goal is to try to work with them so that they can get ISB qualified. If we can get them ISB qualified, then they can get funding through the CTE. Right now, they are not. Some of it is really just industry hours, clocking it, making sure the state has it. I'm not sure they know how to connect those dots. So that's one of my goals, is to work with them and build that program. And then again, these are just some of the partnerships we've already talked about a little bit. Most of them I've spoken to, the Chamber of Commerce is on my list of stopping points in the upcoming weeks. And like I said to the community council, we're not reinventing any rules here. Many districts are already doing this and doing a really fabulous job. So District 214 is kind of like the mecca of pathways. They have a program that's nationally known at this point, and they're kind of setting the stage for this. Some of our partnering schools over at Feeding to Triton are doing a really nice job with their programs as well. So, you know, working with them, seeing what works and what doesn't, and then fitting it into what our needs are here is how this looks. We also have talked to community council, and some I've spoken to Greg, is, you know, utilizing our parents as resources in the community. We have a lot of parents who own companies, work for larger corporations that would be more than willing to partner with our kids, even if it's just for short summer internships. So I'm hoping to get that ball rolling. This is a very large project, and warehouse these opportunities in a way that is accessible not only to counselors, but to the kids directly, to the parents directly. I'll be creating a website with Karen and Christian Brown in her tech department, so that if somebody's wondering about, you know, how do I access this stuff, they just click a button versus, because I got a question last week, you know, and it goes back to what you asked before about, you know, access. Who's driving these pathways for these kids? So getting the information to who it needs to be and making sure they have it all is really, to me, the key. So that families can make the best choice for their students sitting in front of them, and not necessarily because they heard the neighbors doing something or their friend is doing something. You know, we want our kids to be a little more thoughtful about their future planning than that. And I think, oh, this is the last handout that Greg will pass around to you. So this is the Illinois PACE framework. And you can think of this kind of as a roadmap. This is what they've outlined, and you can see the agency sample that worked on this together, and PACE is the one that put this together. And basically, this is the standards they suggest that we need. This is not the state mandated standard, these aren't the things we have to check off of boxes, this is like best practice. So what we would like to do is look at this, they'll actually come in and help us make this Oak Park if we want them to. You know, if you form a committee, they'll come in, they'll pick it apart, we can look at what works for us, what doesn't work, and make it specific to Oak Park. For me, this is a really nice way of making sure we are hitting those marks and not just checking boxes. You know, looking at this programming and saying, can we start a kid in eighth grade and really say by the time they're a senior year or even after senior year, that we've done all these things for these students to create the most opportunity that's possible out there? Because for me, as a counselor, I know it was extremely frustrating to know the opportunity was out there but not know how to connect kids to that opportunity, even when I did it all day long. The trades are a perfect example. I'm working nonstop trying to connect the trade opportunities in Illinois to our kids. It's nearly impossible to get that connection happening without just taking a kid and dropping them at the door of the trade. So that's one of the goals that we're gonna be working on too, is, you know, bridging that gap. And whether that means just partnering up with our other schools that are in the EFE together and saying like, how do we bring them in on a big scale so that they don't look at us and go, why would I come to Oak Park for 10 kids? Which I get, we're not working all day. But we still need to give that access to our kids. We can't just say it's too hard and we don't know how to make it happen. So that's one of my goals as well. But the PACE framework is gonna allow us to kind of structure where we're going and, you know, keeping those other lenses in place and making sure that we're doing everything we can to connect the dots for our kids in terms of opportunity. And then this is just a little study that I found, that I think is a pretty interesting one. So the skills gap may leave an estimated 2.4 million positions unfilled between 2018 and 2028, with a potential economic impact of $2.5 trillion. So that's our window, there's our opportunity right there, and we want our kids to jump in it because other schools are on this, and, you know, it's really about making this Oak Park. And how can we do that?
I'm ready.
You ready? You got three questions?
Great, and I didn't write it down.
That's okay.
I was remembering all three, you're diminishing quickly. So, let me write them down.
Need a minute?
No, no, I, I almost got it, I just lost it. So the three questions are, one, you mentioned, you know, you're partnering with local business, et cetera. You recognize that as a community, we are void of certain things. Is there any opportunity to partner or tag-team with other districts? That we have something they want and they have something we want?
Yes, we actually just brought that up, you know, we were slightly joking at the time. I think I said something like, well, why can't I train my kid for your kid? And then we started talking, and I thought, wait a second, why can't we do that? And then I went up to visit District 214, which is huge, you know, there's six schools, seven schools. And they do things that are unreal. So they're sending kids to O'Hare to get trained as pilots. Now, if one school doesn't offer it, they're swapping the programs out. So one school might have a heavy, you know, industry-based program, another one might have one that's a little bit more college-driven. So they're gonna take their five kids who want that industry experience and swap them with five kids from the other district who might want that college-bound experience. So we did start discussing that, and I believe actually Dr. Pruitt sent something kind of from her, and she goes to a counterpart meeting that I do for DVR. And people are open to it. And, you know, we do transport our students already for programs. They're going out for cosmetology, they're going out for CNA. So really, it's about the transportation and the safety, and making sure that, you know, we, it's kind of like an exchange program, you know, when you send a kid abroad and you bring one back. But yes, that's out there, that idea is definitely floating around.
Okay. The second one relates, is that as you looked at the different current career paths, you had, I think it was nursing assistant?
Correct.
But is there any, I mean, with the breadth of healthcare, I mean, that we have both in Oak Park, with Rush, Oak Park, and then access to, you know, bigger rush, et cetera, is there plans on being more than just that one discipline? Because I know, for example, you know, Rush has all kinds of programs for kids on the west side that they're doing that get into a variety of medical-related fields. So there's more than, you know, and these are, you know, in that realm.
Yes, yeah, health careers is definitely a very broad scope. And the reason CNA comes up is because it's already funded by our brand, you know, it's already set up. But there are opportunities, the real problem, and this happened probably five, six years ago, we actually had a great relationship with Loyola, had a summer program, and they pulled it because of HIPAA laws. So what I'm finding now is that getting the kids into the buildings for medical careers, and actually veterinary careers, same thing, is really tough, but it's not undoable. Like you said, there are programs out there. I think they have been targeting, you know, students probably in inner-city programs that have nothing, which I get. But how can we tap into that in terms of, you know, partnering with them? What can we do? Can we swap out kids? You know, and I think we are open to all of those ideas, but it is getting creative and thinking outside the box too, and making sure that we're aware of those programs that are already in existence and we aren't recreating anything that we don't need to spend that money or timeline.
Might make third one. Yeah, I remember. First, this slide is, I mean, I can speak. There is a gap of employable resources out there. And so it's shameful. And so this work is in good intent. My challenge is, and this is now as a father, is that how do we market? How do we make, you know, I mean, I think this chart shows, you can have the greatest programs, but how do we make people aware of what we have? We have so much, but I, the only reason I knew about these is because I had five kids. And it took me till the fourth one to figure out this stuff existed. So that, either everyone's gonna have families of five or more, or we need a better marketing program.
You're right. And marketing is top of my mind, because, you know, one thing that always bothered me, we used to have an elective sphere, and the kids could go down during lunch and walk around. And I would go watch them, and they'd always do the same, they'd go with their friend, they'd go to one table and then walk out. And I kept thinking, well, you're missing the point, you're missing all these other classes. So one thing, I've talked to John Cogney in the broadcasting office, and I said, listen, could we take your kids who are in broadcasting and do little mini vignettes of these programs? Because now we have advisory, yay. And so they're captive audiences for these little amounts of time. So my goal is to create awareness of these programs and say, you know, just because you may not know your interest, it doesn't mean the interest isn't there. And they don't know what they don't know. And so showing them, here's what's there, and listen, take that first course, try it out, see if you like it. You might be shocked. I mean, I can't tell you how many kids as a counselor I had. We put them in a class because it fit, and they came back and loved it, and then signed up for the next one. So we want to be able to create those opportunities early on so that maybe they try one or two different pathways before they figure it out, but they're not doing it at your expense as parents when they get to college, or waiting till they change a career down the line and have to pay for another degree. So yes, I agree with you.
And even going to the middle school.
Middle school, they're gonna be a part of it, yeah.
All right, I'm done.
Greg? You got a problem?
Uh, one.
Okay.
Simple question. Help me understand what, just a little bit, obviously, I think these are great ideas, and I really think it's fantastic, but I do want to understand what, how are the economics different to deliver this type of education versus what we typically deliver? Because I just reflect on some of the things we've done, different classes and different things. If you add in transportation, these can become fairly expensive. So what, how does this model compare?
I'm making this video a little bit, you can take it. Okay. I mean, the way that I, because I'm overseeing the grants now, so I'm in there and I'm seeing where the money's being spent, where we've been spending it for the last, I don't know how many years. And to me, there's a lot of room for creativity in there that we just haven't utilized. Partly because there was really nobody driving that ship in terms of curriculum. It was like, you know, yes, Era como, ya sabes, sí, veremos los boxes para los suplentes, sí, aseguraremos a los estudiantes de lo que necesitan en el classroom. Pero los grantes pueden financiar una parte de esto mientras sigamos siguiendo las reglas. Así que, ya sabes, parte de esto es realmente planear estratégicamente, es por eso que no queríamos lanzar esto muy rápido y solo, ya sabes, dejarlo allí para el público.
Déjame agregar una ilustración a ese punto, así que has notado que Barbering y Cosmetología eran parte de la página de futuros caminos aunque ya tenemos esos programas aquí y esto, ilustra lo que dijiste antes, esos no son caminos definidos porque nuestro socio o organización no tiene la aprobación de la ciudad para hacerlo suceder. Si podemos trabajar con ellos para hacerlo suceder, sellando esos dólares grante podríamos potencialmente ser disponibles para ayudar con el programa. Tú tienes razón, esto será más, esto es más caro en esos tipos de formas. Pero hay recursos allí que podemos tapar una vez que tengamos mejores caminos definidos para compensar mucho de ese costo.
Así que, gracias por tu presentación y este programa, estoy muy emocionado, creo que todos lo estamos. La parte que realmente es intangible y es un tiempo y esfuerzo y costos complicados es desarrollar relaciones. Y a un buen nivel, y suena como que estás en el audio con tantos y tienes una gran brecha que estás estirando. Una cosa que sé es el jefe de la Comercio de Oak Park que he sido miembro durante 15 años y, ya sabes, realmente estéis en contacto. Yo estaré más consciente de promover esto y asegurándoles que están conscientes de diferentes factores y siendo un abogado a la medida que pueda, para liberar conciencia. Solo quería animarlos a saber que, ya sabes, que hay mucho de apretado y deseo en la comunidad entre individuos y organizaciones para conectarse y tener una buena relación simbiótica con la escuela y los estudiantes. Y es solo navegar en eso y sé que hay, en algunos casos, la gente ha intentado, por alguna razón, no ha conectado con la persona correcta.
He oído lo mismo.
Y así, solo quiero, supongo, públicamente y decir que hay una nueva era aquí y lo que era en el pasado fue el pasado, hay éxito en el pasado, solo no todos los experimentos son los mismos. Así que creo que hay una gran upside a esto en tantos niveles y tantos certificados que se desprendrán de ello. Y así, el 3 de marzo es un martes por la mañana y ese es el reunió anual del chamber de comercio. Asegurarme de que estén conscientes de eso.
Gracias.
Y así estaré ahí y así, bueno, gracias, estoy emocionado por ello. Mencionaste el programa de incubator y estamos navegando algunas cosas con eso ahora mismo también para tratar de ayudar a pasar, ya sabes, un barrera muy necesaria. Es un lugar para proteger la responsabilidad de ciertas cosas y así con el médico también. Así que aprecio su espíritu de encontrar una manera y un estudiante de una manera no tradicional tal vez inicialmente y luego formalizarlo, así.
Aprecio eso, muchas gracias.
Solo tengo una pregunta, hablaste de desarrollo profesional para los maestros, ¿qué pasa con los consejos?
Sí, en realidad están incluidos en el grano también, así que cuando encontramos oportunidades que, ya sabes, cogen y tapan en algunos de estos cosas, entonces voy a promover eso a los consejos y animarlos a asegurarse. Pero como consejero, y yo ya era alguien que estaba pasionada, nadie me preguntaba. Solo me decían, oh, ve a ver estas cosas sobre caminos de carrera. Pero en realidad ahora se está estrechando, he ido a algunos de los mayores, así como los workshops de la palabra universitaria. Ya sabes, las conferencias más grandes que ya están allí están empezando a infundir esto ya. Así que mi esperanza es que eso continuará y luego, cuando obtenga información para los consejos, lo encargaré a ellos. Podemos usar nuestro dinero de grano para enviarlos a estas oportunidades de desarrollo profesional, ya sea un maestro o un consejo. Se cae bajo el mismo umbrella y ellos necesitan educación también. Y, ya sabes, como alguien que ha sido parte de ese grupo durante 15 años, sé qué es la educación que es necesaria. Es solo un problema de, ya sabes, presentación y asegurarse de que todos, a lo mejor que podamos ser en la misma página, estén en la misma página porque, ya sabes, mucho de esto no es una elección que estamos haciendo. Tenemos algunas cosas muy específicas que tenemos que hacer para el estado y va a tener que ser aceptada. Así que, ya sabes, tenemos que tomarlo y hacerlo nuestro. Así que es realmente acerca de usar lo que tenemos. Así que NAMM, por ejemplo, acaba de salir hace un mes, noté que van a estar haciendo los caminos. Así que cuando hacen el plan de cuatro años con sus consejos en NAMM, en realidad van a tener un componente de caminos. Así que un consejo va a estar sentado con un estudiante que dice, quiero hacer desarrollo infantil temprano. Programamos para que el consejo clickee el desarrollo infantil y auto fija el camino para ellos. Así que voy a aprender un poco más de eso, pero eso ayudará en algunos de esos debates sobre, ya sabes, ¿qué si la persona sentada frente a mí no entiende lo que estoy diciendo? ¿Qué si, ya sabes, tengo que ser? Y mi objetivo es realmente tipo de ampliación de PE, que, ya sabes, en algunos de los literarios que tenemos también porque la disposición de algunos de los maestros, desde que me he puesto en esta posición, ha sido fabulosa. Quiero decir, he publicado, publicé un par de letras de trajes y las puse. Dijeron, les daré a los maestros de CTE y dije, bueno, ¿por qué no daría a la escuela? ¿No es el punto de que estemos tratando de, ya sabes, ampliar la comprensión? Y así lo hice, no le pedí autorización, solo lo hice. Y el esparcimiento fue fabuloso. Ya sabes, los maestros estaban alcanzando, ya sabes, tengo familiares que están en el tray, ¿qué podemos hacer? Así que, ya sabes, realmente traer esto a una comprensión schoolwide que es importante. Y luego eso crea que, ya sabes, ese niño que puede no estar universitario por alguna razón, tal vez solo no está universitario ahora, dales una sensación de éxito mientras están aquí.
Aprecio eso y quiero, creo que es importante, dada cómo esto alinea con las normas del estado pero también nuestros planes estratégicos de comprender qué es el desgaste, el desgaste de género. Porque creo que eso informará a la PE también.
Claro.
Y cómo, como Tom estaba diciendo, así que no tenemos que tener cinco hijos.
Para ser directos.
Pero cómo, cómo entendemos cómo, qué niños están, o están siendo canalizados o qué están eligiendo.
Quién va dónde y por qué.
Gracias.
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 ¿No hay paradas?
Oh, no, hay más paradas.
8:30, tenías que volver.
Sí, 8:30.
8:30.
8:00.
Bien, estamos listos para la política y adelante es...
No, vamos a sacar esta política.
Necesita algo de lenguaje. Sí, así que, ¿hay algún futuro de agenda? Okay, bien. ¿Estás listo?
Sí.
Okay, bien. Perdón.
Bueno, creo que de alguna manera deberíamos, no estoy muy seguro del foro, pero deberíamos divertir una conversación acerca de cómo aumentamos, lo que obtenemos de nuestros balances de fondos en términos de retorno.
Un plan de inversiones más agresivo.
Más agresivo, eso es.
Futuro de agenda, yo estoy con ellos.
Okay. ¿Estás listo?
Lo tengo.
Okay.
Gail está por todo.
Más agresivo. Okay, ¿algún otro? Okay, ¿cómo se dirige?
Segundo.
¿Algo? All right.